Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 10th, 2017, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you are all here with us this evening. We would ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. And how about the meeting agenda? Do we have a motion regarding our meeting agenda?
Move approval.
All right. Do we have a second?
Greg.
All in favor? Aye. Against? Matter carries. It's approved. Let's move on now to proclamations and special presentations. We have several this evening. Our first is a proclamation declaring October 9th as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Falls Church, and I believe Ms. Hardy is going to read that. Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you. Whereas the indigenous peoples of the lands that would later become known as the Americas have occupied these lands since time immemorial, and whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia is built upon the homelands and villages of the indigenous peoples of this region without whom the founding of the Commonwealth would not have been possible, and whereas many contributions have been made to our nation through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and these deep cultural contributions have substantially shaped the character of the United States, and whereas the City Council opposes the systemic racism towards indigenous people in our country which perpetuates poverty and inequality and exacerbates disproportionate health, education, and social stability, and whereas the City of Falls Church wishes to help close the equity gap for indigenous peoples through practices that reflect the experiences of indigenous peoples, ensure greater access and opportunity, and honor our nation's indigenous roots, history, and contributions, and whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, do hereby recognize the second Monday in October 2017 as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Falls Church, Virginia, and urge all citizens to recognize this day and reflect upon the many contributions as well as continuing struggles of indigenous peoples. Let's go ahead and move on to our next proclamation, which is a proclamation declaring October 2017 as Fire Prevention Month. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Before I begin the proclamation, there are a couple of key points that people should remember, not only during this week but throughout every minute of every day. First of all, have working smoke detectors and make sure that you, at all times, have an escape plan from wherever you are. So, the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the City of Falls Church is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,560 people in the United States in 2015 according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to more than 365,500 home fires, and whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home constructions, and whereas many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments, and whereas a home fire escape plan provides the skill set and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation, and whereas a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting, and whereas home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household, and whereas practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation, and whereas first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas city residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Planned Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, do hereby proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to develop a home fire escape plan, practice it twice a year, and participate in the public safety activities of the Falls Church Volunteer Fire Department, including an open house at the fire station on October 14th, 2017. So, would you like, anyone would like to come on up and tell us a little about, maybe both of you all would like to come up? We appreciate the --
I'm very excited.
It's all right. We appreciate the great work both of you all do. Come on, both of you all get up, and why don't we, do you have anything you want to say first off, or do you want to just come on up and get the?
Say a few more words about the volunteers. Well, I would like to say, on behalf of all of our fire service, may it be Captain Polera, who also serves as our emergency manager, for, on behalf of Chief Bonzano and Chief Brennan Keenan, Mehan, sorry, thank you for this. It's been proven here in the little city that family plan with smoke detectors, a plan and action do save lives, and we've seen that within the last several months. But we appreciate the proclamation and spreading the good word, and welcome everybody in the city to the open house on October 14th, Saturday, at Station 6 down on Little Falls Road.
Great. Why don't you come on up? We can hand you the proclamation. Yes, absolutely. Keep that, and we really appreciate the great work you all do for our city, and we're really looking forward to this open house, which I've been to many times, and look forward to coming this Saturday. So, thanks again for your great work for our community. Our last proclamation involves Energy Action Month, and Mr. Z, would you do the honors, please?
Thank you so much, Mayor. This is a proclamation I'm happy and proud to read, and, you know, just not more than half a decade ago would have been rather short, but now it has its own gravitas. Whereas, City Council Resolution 2017-12 adopted the regional greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals developed by the Metropolitan Washington Council of Government as its own goals applicable to the city government as well as residents and businesses, and whereas the City Council further resolved in Resolution 2017-12 to take actions to achieve these greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, and whereas the City Council of the City Falls Church also adopted Resolution 2017-16 reaffirming these commitments and resolving to continue to advocate for regional, state, and federal support to promote and protect the environment that is healthy for generations to come, and whereas addressing energy efficiency and clean local energy production promotes a cleaner environment, a more prosperous economy, and positive economic development, improve comfort and health in homes and businesses at lower cost and a higher quality of life, and whereas our vision of environmental sustainability in the City of Falls Church incorporates energy efficiency and reduction of greenhouse gas emissions as a core value that embodies what we are striving to achieve, and whereas October is Energy Action Month, a national effort to secure a more prosperous and energy-independent future which depends partly on our ability to address our shared energy challenges and encourages diverse, clean, and efficient energy production, and whereas our community demonstrates leadership in environmental sustainability through multiple environmental programs led by the Environmental Sustainability Council, whose membership of nine city residents is supplemented by many volunteers participating, as three subcommittees, Education, Habitat Restoration, and Energy Transition, and by six high school student representatives, and whereas the Energy Transition Subcommittee has demonstrated leadership in encouraging energy efficiency and clean energy use in public buildings, businesses, and homes, including supporting Energy Star performance monitoring of public buildings, the availability of thermal cameras for loan from the Mary Riley Stiles Public Library, the registration of Falls Church as a green power community, promoting and supporting the installation of solar power for our homes and businesses, and evaluating and promoting the use of geothermal resources for our schools, and whereas the city uses clean biodiesel in its large trucks and buses and hybrid cars, has replaced all signal, traffic signals, and more than 130 street lights with high-efficiency LED lighting, and is progressively replacing lighting of public facilities with LEDs, and actively promotes energy conservation through staff actions, and whereas guidance to make homes and businesses more energy-efficient is readily available through the U.S. Department of Energy, the Virginia Energy Efficiency Council, and the city's own webpages.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim October 2017 as Energy Action Month in the City of Falls Church, and encourage the city, residents, businesses, and organizations to commit to take actions this month and in the future to conserve energy and reduce carbon emissions. Mr. Shields, is there anyone from staff who'd like to receive the proclamation?
We do. We have Kate Walker--
There they are. Okay.
And Tim Stevens from the Environmental--
Thank you all. If you'd like to say anything, please do so. We're really making some great progress in the city, and we appreciate your fine work. Also, Mr. Z, as well as his leadership on council in that regard, so thank you all. But go ahead.
Thank you very much for the proclamation and, of course, for your support. There are just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. In the city's own operations, we had some pro bono training from JDM Associates, a city business, who have trained city staff in the schools, and myself, and some volunteers in the use of Energy Star Portfolio Manager to look for opportunities in energy efficiency improvement in city buildings. City Operations has long been dedicated to environmental sustainability, and Kathy Allen has led a lot of work within the city to improve our energy efficiency. And, of course, the ESC has become very active. Mr. Z mentioned, you know, we have nine, a full complement of members, and six high school students on the committee this year. Our October meeting will be addressing green schools, a very topical subject to which you've all been invited. The meeting will be next Thursday at 7:30 p.m., so I hope you'll be able to attend. Thank you.
Thank you both. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I'll just say briefly that residents in the city can engage on energy issues through the Energy Transition Subcommittee, and leading communities around the country include energy as part of the issues that they focus on. So, we thank you. By signing the proclamation this evening, it indicates that you want to be part of those communities.
Very much. Why don't you come on up and get the proclamation? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any oaths of office to administer?
Yes, sir, we do. Julie Harrison for the Historic Architectural Review Board.
All right. Come on down, and thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
Hi. Just raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Julie Harrison.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States--
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially--
And I will faithfully and impartially--
Discharge and perform--
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me--
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Historic Architectural Review Board--
As a member of the Historic Architectural Review Board.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up, and we'll give you our congratulations and thanks. All right. comments. So, do we have any written comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do. Patrick Sprouse forwarded his report on his work with the Fairfax County Commission on Aging. Sean Dakin provided comments about the high school referendum, as well as Karen Sharp. Steve Mostow of 204 Grove Avenue and the MEHPTA Treasurer shared his thoughts about the source of student population in the city as related to housing type. And then the EDA forwarded a statement regarding consultant estimates of commercial development at the George Mason High School site, and the statement supported setting aside up to 10 acres on the site for commercial development to help offset costs.
All righty. Thank you. So, we're going to move on to public comments. Those are people in the audience who would like to speak to a matter. You can either speak now or when your matter is called. We would just ask that you would state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes. I'm going to call the first name. I'm not sure I'm going to get it right, but I'm going to give it a try, so let's see what happens. Michael Hirsted?
Herestead, sir.
Okay. Well, please come on forward, and let's hear what you have to say. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mike Herestead, and I live in the West Broad Apartments with my wife Amy and our two boys, Gabe and Lucas. We're an active-duty military family and registered voters in Falls Church City. We very much enjoy everything the city has to offer: great schools, a great library, farmer's market, creative cauldron, and the ability to walk to and from and everywhere and between. However, unfortunately, our enjoyment ends at Annandale Road behind Harris Teeter. Crossing Annandale Road, either at Gundry or next to Big Chimneys Park, produces a deep sense of anxiety and frequent crossers, and a false sense of security in the uninitiated. Motors sail through stop signs, they speed, they sneak around school buses, and they fail to stop for pedestrians. This section of Annandale Road between Maple Street and Gundry is dangerous. I've talked to dozens of neighbors who share similar stories of close calls, anxiety, and frustration. Frustration with the unsafe design of the roadway, with its sweeping turns, poor visibility in merging lanes, and frustration that the city has yet to implement long-term traffic control solutions. However, we're truly thankful for the efforts the city has put in place so far. City officials have met with residents of the neighboring Winter Hill community and the West Broad community. They've increased police presence during high-risk times, such as when school buses are present.
Thank you, Chief.
And also, they have installed a traffic counter to study the traffic flow and hopefully implement some more measures. However, more needs to be done, so I urge you to consider my September 11th, 2017 report submitted to the Citizen Advisory Transportation Committee. I urge you to implement and take prompt of positive action to improve the safety of Annandale Road for the neighbors and their children in our City of Falls Church, Virginia. Thank you for your time, and thank you all for your service.
Thank you very much. And before you leave, why don't you take two pins for your kids for sitting around and waiting this evening? Mr. Shields, while he's doing that, maybe you could address his concerns and let us know what's going on. I know there's some traffic coming in the works. Thank you for coming out this evening. Maybe you could let us know, Mr. Shields, what's in the works down there and how we might address these concerns.
Sure. I'd be happy to. And I first want to start by thanking Mr. Herestead. He has submitted a list of recommendations, and they're very thoughtful, and they're really well put together. And so, that's the type of input that I think is very helpful as we're considering improvements to a street, through the neighborhood traffic calming program. So, the most immediate changes to that section of road are anticipated to be undertaken through the Big Chimneys Park project, and that is to create a, you know, much clearer pedestrian crossing between 301 West Broad and the park, and throttle the street down and make that crossing safer. We'll need to work with the neighborhood on the final elements of that design and have a design that we think will ultimately will work for the neighborhood. An additional traffic calming project for the Gundry and Maple, Gundry and Annandale intersection, I think that is now the subject of discussion in terms of how that would go through the NTC program. And I think we can be very positive and proactive about that. As the council is aware, in terms of funding, we have been awarded grant funding for the neighborhood traffic calming program, so that's very helpful. Our intention, however, was to bundle up a series of traffic calming projects together so when we go through the very difficult federal procurement process, we can get more bang for our buck and not just do one small project, but do a series of projects. And so, that is our intention going forward for the use of those grant funds. So, what I would propose is, I'll just, I'd like to follow up with you after this meeting just to get, make sure that the communication is good with you and with the Winter Hill Neighborhood Association in terms of what the timeline for that would be, what the process for that will be, and make sure we're all on the same page and working together. Annandale was designed in the 1940s, and it was designed in an era that valued swooping curves and easy car access. And what that means is that cars feel like driving much faster than 25 miles per hour on that street, and that's a design issue, and we recognize that, and we think we can solve it through design. But we do need to, you know, those design fixes are expensive. We do have funding for it. We just need to go through now the process with the federal rules to do that.
So, if I could just mention one thing, I think you and I discussed the idea that maybe the city would be able to do some, not thermoplasty, but using a different kind of technique that we could do in-house and in a cheaper way to start painting up some of these intersections. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
We were talking about that just this past week, and Councilmember Snyder also saw it on the street. Our Director of Operations, Robert Goff, is experimenting with a product that we can use in-house for thermoplastic bed crossings that are much more visible than paint, and they last a lot longer than paint. It's very similar to the thermoplastic that you see on our busier corridors, but much less expensive. So, that's something that we'll be rolling out and using more frequently. So, that's another piece of good news. I do think the situation at Annandale and Gundry is more than paint. We think that ultimately this is a situation that deserves a redesign of the street, and I think that's the process that we will try to go through. We've also received video from neighbors who've just documented the way that the stop sign functions on that street, and this is a problem with trying to do traffic calming with just a stop sign, is that almost everybody rolls through it. And so, if you're a pedestrian and you're counting on that stop sign, the driver knows it's a traffic calming stop sign, and they might commute on that street every day, and they'll just roll right through it. And arguably, and I think nationwide the data is, that sometimes those stop signs that are just there for traffic calming can create a less safe situation than no stop sign at all. So, we think that actually a more comprehensive redesign of the street to try to make it have more of a residential character and send the signal to the driver, this is not a street you're supposed to drive fast down, you're supposed to drive in a way that's appropriate for a dense residential neighborhood.
Maybe I got a comment or two. Do we have anybody that would like, Ms. Hardy?
So, I like the idea of the bundling for federal money, especially if it helps kind of get more throughput through the NTC process, but while we wait for that, are there other just light solutions we can implement if it's not paint, some other solutions? Because I imagine that besides Gundry and Annandale, there are probably other intersections and other streets in the city that are also waiting for a heavier solution. So, are there short-term solutions that we can look at to tie us over in the next 12 months or so until we get the federal money?
We are, that's part of our playlist or toolkit. I would say that on Gundry, I think that we do have light solutions there, and they're not very, they're not effective enough. That's kind of an initial response, but maybe we can get a more comprehensive response back to that question, and as well as the follow-up with Mr. Herestead.
Oliver?
I guess along that line, I think that this intersection's been identified as an issue for a long time, and waiting until Big Chimneys goes forward or waiting until we have the federal funding, I think that's a very dangerous thing, and we need to figure out whatever we can do in the short term, even if it's a light solution which is not effective in the long term. I know, for example, we've talked about the fact that signs lose their efficacy after some time. Well, until we can do a hard solution, can we do some more with signage? Can we attempt to divert traffic that's cutting through to West Broad Street to go up Maple? Can we put a simple sign there saying, you know, "Traffic to Great Falls, turn right here"? And even if the little pedestrian symbol in the middle of the crosswalk is not effective in the long run, if that's something we can do in the short run, it would be helpful. I cross that intersection with my dog every day, and every day while I am still in the crosswalk, a car will go through that intersection. Now, I'm an adult, and my dog's well-behaved, but every day when I cross that intersection, one or more cars does not wait for me to leave the crosswalk. So, even just signage reminding people that they are required to stop for a pedestrian in a crosswalk, even if it's effective only for six or 12 months, you know, we need to look at some other solutions like that.
Phil, can you please stop? Next time?
Do what?
I'm just kidding. So, anyway, I would also say, why, and if we can, or Mr. Shields, to the extent we can use tape and the paint, even though it may not be the ideal solution, I'm not talking about this intersection per se, but just throughout the city, if we can bring that in-house at a much cheaper cost, seems to me there's a whole lot of intersections that could use some help in this city, and crosswalks that could be upgraded or updated, and so to the extent we're able to do that at a lower cost, I think that's great news, and I would certainly welcome having more, you know, taped striped intersections and updates, et cetera, throughout the city. So, maybe you could just give some consideration to that. All right. Anything else anyone wants to say?
Well, since you brought me up, I'd just like to share with you our experience on Southwest Street, which, you know, has some of the same problems with cut-through traffic, and, you know, the staff knows that the pedestrian paddles that have been planted in the middle of the intersections at three, I think, or four spots along Southwest Street have created a better situations. You know, nothing is ideal. You still have to be watchful, particularly at night. I mean, I know, after I read your letter, I drove over there, as I've been over there a number of times, but I deliberately drove over there to see, and, you know, the sightlines are not really good, particularly at night. The paddles planted in the middle of the street, which are a fairly easy thing to do, I think would respond partly to what Ms. Oliver is saying and others are saying, too. I mean, I just can't wait for architecture and engineering to solve or address this problem. I think something planted in the middle of the street that goes beyond stripes and bumps could be done, and I'd suggest, based on Southwest Street, that you try the mid-intersection paddles.
All right. Anything else? Mr. Snyder?
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, thanks. Mr. City Manager, when do you think you can have a report back to us on the issues that we've been discussing and that were presented?
Well, I think I can report back tomorrow because there are things underway right now. So, let me give the immediate update, and then we'll talk about next steps after that.
Okay. I think, as you've heard, we'd all like to follow up very expeditiously. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our next and last speaker, at least at this time, is Dee Lord. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm here to talk about the playground renovation in Cherry Hill Park. I'm sorry that I'm raising this issue so late, but it only came to my attention very recently. What is planned will require ripping out every tree in the playground. That's 10 to 12 trees. People in the city don't know that. I didn't know that until I inquired about it when I saw the ribbons go up in the park. When that happens and the trees come down, the-- People in the city don't know that. I didn't know that until I inquired about it when I saw the ribbons go up in the, in the park. When that happens and the trees come down, the toddlers who have enjoyed the playground for generations can no longer use that facility without being subjected to unrelenting sun. The people in the city, I think, will want to know why that happened, why all the trees were ripped out, and they will ask the City Council to tell them why it was necessary to allow this to happen. I've spoken with Danny Schlitt, who was very nice to me and to the Advisory Board, and they have determined to sacrifice the trees, all of them. I think we can do better than that, and I am here to ask you to insist that we do better than that. This project was supposed to start yesterday, so there is some urgency in my appeal to you. I don't think the project should go forward until everyone in the community has been informed of what is proposed, including removal of all the trees. And people should be given an opportunity to voice their feelings about that. I think many people who are in favor of an improved playground, and who wouldn't be, would be surprised and chagrined to know that the plan that we've come up with will entail removing all the trees from that facility. What is needed is a rethink and guidance from the council, guidance that we care about the trees and we care about all the children who play under them. We want to preserve and improve Cherry Hill Park. This project, as proposed, will deplete the park, it won't improve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I know some of us have received some correspondence over the weekend regarding this. I wonder, Wyatt, if you could just tell us, kind of an update us on where things are and the rationale, et cetera, for these improvements?
The, this project does involve, the playground equipment replacement at Cherry Hill Park has gone through an extensive design process that involved the children that use it, the parents that go there, that involved public meetings. We've really tried to work very hard to bring people into this design process, which included mailings to all the nearby residents. And there are some compromises that we needed to make in terms of the design. As the council will recall, one of our objectives here is to have the playground provide more playground equipment, so it's larger, to provide playground equipment for a broader range of age groups, and that regularly came out of the public input process, and so there is going to be more equipment there that takes more space. In addition, we currently do not have an ADA compliant playground, and we want this playground to be our ADA compliant playground. And so that does require more grading and more sort of a base material to make it fully accessible. And so those are some of the mission statement for this project and the scope of work for it. Now, working with the City Arborist and the Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board, I think, Board, and I think the Friends of the Cherry Hill Farmhouse and other groups have been involved in evaluating the plans, where the, where the equipment's going to go, and all these decisions have been made really with the desire to, A, protect the historic character of the park so that the equipment's not like right there in front of the barn, but set back in, and pretty much in the same location that it is today. It will get a little bit closer to Park Avenue, which means some of the pine trees are the ones that will have to come out. And in addition, there are, as was noted, about a dozen other trees, some large, some small, that will be, you know, when the grading is done, it would essentially make those trees no longer viable. And so it is essentially a safety concern of, you know, the trees that were taken out, that if you have a tree that's going to be failing right over the playground equipment, that's not a good situation. And so the Arborist has identified the trees that she's recommended to come out, that's been vetted by the Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board and looked at in every which way, and that, those are the conclusions that have been reached. In terms of timing, the work is slated to begin this week, and so that's the, the update that I can provide, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Ms. Hardy?
I just wanted to offer a comment. So I attended, actually, several of the public engagement sessions as a parent, because my kids love Cherry Hill, and so I was sad to hear about some of the trees having to go, but I thought the actually engagement process was actually very well done for the process. I think there were a number of walking tours of it. I actually just went on one over the weekend where Mr. Schlitt actually showed us exactly how the layout would go and explained kind of which trees were actually in poor health and that, you know, needed to go anyway, and there were safety hazards. So I actually thought that between the communication, and there was a video that was done recently, which I thought did a nice job of actually showing kind of what the layout of the new playground equipment would be and providing ample opportunity, that I actually thought city staff did a nice job with communication this time. So I know it's always tough to balance multiple needs and perspectives, but I think, given kind of all the competing requirements of the project, I think where we're going to end up is probably going to be a good thing.
Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I've been following this topic with some interest, being the liaison to the Tree Commission, as well as having an intrinsic interest in Cherry Hill Park. I do pledge that at the next meeting with the Tree Commission that I will raise this subject and see whether, in fact, there's some other things that we can do. I don't know that we can save these trees exactly. I think as far as that goes with regard to the design of the playground equipment, these trees will ultimately have to be sacrificed, and that's in the design. However, those 12 trees that are being taken down, I will work with the Tree Commission to see whether, in fact, we can plant 12 more trees in other places to replace them so that we won't have a net loss. And, you know, I assure your feelings that every, every tree, no matter how big or small, that disappears from our landscape is ultimately a loss. Trees are an important part of what we pleasure do to reduce greenhouse gases, and we are at the high end of what we do as a city, so I thank you for your concerns, not just about beautification, but also about the viability of whoever is the city. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Mr. Shields, are the trees that are coming down marked in the park? I know they had put up some ribbons around where the playground equipment's going to be.
They are marked, yeah.
And I did, I've watched all these things, and I was at meetings, is the playground area going to have any trees around it? I think one of Ms. Lord's concerns is shade for kids who are on the playground.
And that's, that's a real concern.
Yeah.
There will be trees around the playground equipment at the end of the day, but there are some that have to come out, and that's, that is what we're lamenting.
Right.
It would be ideal not to have to take out any of the trees. If you go out there on a warm day, that shade is, is really precious. So we recognize that. I think the Arborist tried to save every tree that she thought safe, you know, would balance the need for long-term safety and, and, you know, what trees were going to be viable and which ones weren't with the regrading that has to happen. There will be trees planted as well.
And will they plant, not tiny trees, larger trees?
I don't know the specs on those trees.
Yeah.
I know the Arborist tends to like them a little bit smaller, not giant trees.
Right, right.
Just because, again, she's looking out for the long-term health, and a smaller tree is going to have a better chance of surviving. But, you know, there's an awareness of the value of the shade on the playground equipment in the design process.
Thank you.
Just to confirm, so there will be shade when all the trees come down, the playground equipment goes in, or is there going to be a big hole for 10 years till the trees grow up?
Well, there's certainly going to be less shade than there is today.
Gotcha, which is, it's basically in shade, entirely in shade, at least.
Largely in shade, and so if you, I don't have the graphics for the plan in front of, in front of us to describe what's going to change. In my walkthrough of it last week, knowing that these concerns were coming up, there is one large hickory tree that I was really glad to see is going to be saved, and there are others in the perimeter of the playground equipment that will cast some shade. But, you know, I think people who go there are going to feel the difference with, with the removal of the trees, and that's why the replanning is really important, and, you know, eventually it will grow back, but there will be a difference that you feel.
How, approximately, are you doing a one-for-one replacement approximately?
I don't know that exactly. I think that would be typical for our goal, or possibly even more than that, so let me get that specific information back.
Yeah, I would certainly encourage you to do at least one-for-one replacement, as Mr. Z suggested. Mr. Snyder?
Sure. Mr. City Manager, could you quickly review the public process that was involved with this park?
Well, it's been a year-long design process, and so the first meeting was actually in October of 2016, then there were subsequent follow-up meetings that were sort of of the, sort of the broadly advertised, come to the Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board to review all the plan and provide input meetings. In addition to those big, those were sort of two big meetings. In addition to that, there was a whole series of smaller meetings engaging youngsters and parents in the design of the playground equipment, the playground tour that Ms. Hardy has referred to in multiple work sessions by the Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board. It's also been reviewed by other boards and commissions.
So the parks and rec meetings were advertised, and people had the opportunity to attend?
Yes, sir.
So I think the reason for sensitivity about this park is that, of course, it is the central park in the community, and it has historic importance, it has governmental importance, clearly it has importance as a playground, but it was the one place in the city where you had a lot of trees at one place, or one of the few places. So the, I can understand how people are reacting to a change that's significant, so, but what I'm hearing is that the actual plan may look better in completion, and that, that the trees that are being taken down are essential for safety of the playground, and then were taken down because of the health of the trees. But that otherwise, in the marginal areas, the area around, for example, the picnic shelter.
That's all unchanged, that's right.
That's all unchanged, so you'll continue to have a fairly significant amount of trees over in that part of it.
Yeah, the tree removal is only right there where the playground equipment is, and it's either because the playground's getting bigger, and so there's, because of the subsurface materials, you know, the tree had to be removed, or because the edging for the playground equipment is right there at the critical root zone of the tree, and the Arborist was concerned about the future stability of the tree if it remained.
Thank you very much. Why don't we now move on to council requests? Are there any council requests? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. I don't know if your manager's comments are going to elide pretty quickly into the school topic. I just had a couple of other things I wanted to ask that were not related to that. One is, at the VML Conference in Williamsburg, one of the sessions that I attended was by the Auditor of Public Accounts Office. There was reference there to a study report that they had issued, which I understood to be basically a assessment of communities' resilience and capacity in fiscal terms. I don't think maybe the Budget Committee knew about this, but I'm not sure that I'd heard about that or seen the results of it. Wonder if we could get something from the Auditor of Public Accounts Office about that? And for the Communications Office, I saw a reference today on Facebook about some other group that had studied cities in Virginia and false search ranked in the, I believe, top tier. Again, I'm not sure of the exact metrics, but it seemed like something that we might want to have folks be aware of. And finally, the walk-around tour of the Insight Broad in Washington proposal is next Monday at 6:00, I believe, right? There was a reference at this morning's chamber meeting that there would, might maybe be a first reading of that application next Monday, but I don't think that's correct, is it? We are not going to do first reading, are we?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The, just real briefly, yes. I was planning in the manager's report, just to give public notice, for Monday, October 16th, there'll be a walking tour at Washington and Broad at 6:00 PM, and the purpose is to meet with the Insight Development Team and Planning Staff right there on the site to review project plans, have cones on the street to measure setbacks, and get a feel for how this site would be developed with the plans, and have us be right there to see it on the street. It has been widely advertised, notices have gone to surrounding businesses, notices have gone to adjacent neighborhoods, so we are hoping for a good turnout for that walking tour. So that's the first phase of the walking tour, which again starts at 6:00 PM next Monday. And then after we're finished with the walking tour of the Washington Broad Project, the intent is then to walk down the street to 301 West Broad to just look at that streetscape. So while we're thinking about what might be built in the future, we can look at what has been recently built, and look at lessons learned, and also look at other parts of the city where we really need to improve walkability, and discuss the plans to do that over the future. And then the walking tour would end at Lincoln and Tanner Hill, and have the similar discussion of project that was recently built and discuss it in terms of walkability, the building materials, and just, and look at that with an eye towards potential future development in the city and lessons learned.
Sounds like an ambitious schedule. Can I add to it just briefly, since we're going to be at Harris Teeter, can we turn around and look across the other side of the street to the Stratford property and just spend a minute or two having a briefing on what current zoning allows there, what, you know, thoughts, if any, folks have about what we might do there? I think the Zoys Tellier site is pretty well set for now for a while, but the Stratford is in some sort of play too, and while we're out there on the street, it might be helpful to have people see, you know, what could be allowed there and what would need to be special exceptions.
Other, okay, Ms. Hardy and then Mr. Snyder?
Thank you. I actually just want to go back to that first proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day. I wanted to actually put a request out maybe to the city attorney to research how we can make that official every year. I know we recognize it for this year, and I think we're actually only the second city in Virginia to recognize it, so I would love for it to be an annual thing so that we don't have to do a proclamation all the time. So for example, if the library is closed in observance of Columbus Day, it'd be nice to say, "We're closed in observance of Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day," how we need to make that work. Thank you.
Mr. Snyder, or Ms. Oliver, then Mr. Snyder?
So, Mr. Shields, I have three requests. The first request is that you thank staff. I know that recently the Winter Hill community has made a number of requests of planning public works, stormwater, and they have also commented to me that the interactions they've had with that staff was very positive, they felt that they were responsive, they felt like it was very helpful, and the recent communications from the Parks Department directly to the head of the Winter Hill Community Association about the upcoming soil testing in Big Chimneys Park, which was then disseminated to the community, has worked very well. So in general, I was just really pleased in the last couple of weeks at how effectively city staff has worked with the community there, and I just wanted to extend my thanks to all of the people that made that happen. That was request number one, was a thank you. Request number two is, when you have a chance, could we get an update on the status of the traffic signal timing project on West Broad Street? And request number three is, when you have a chance, can we get an update on the West Broad Street sidewalks, including the one last stretch of sidewalk in front of Vito's, and when we might actually get that all up to our current standard?
Did you want to reply to any of that now, or is there?
Well, thank you for those comments, and I will be happy to relay those words to, to staff that have been involved in the Winter Hill projects. I will need to get back with you on the traffic signal timing. On the West Broad Street sidewalk in front of Vito's, we have reached an impasse in those discussions, and so I will send a written report to the City Council in terms of potential next steps on that.
Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Two quick questions. First of all, are there some of the fire safety messages that we talked about tonight? Are they generally available on the website, perhaps as lead information? While people may be paying attention to this, it might be really helpful. Particularly, I think they've heard the messages, but they need to be repeated about the escape plan. Actually, wherever you are, you ought to have one of those. Actually, wherever you are, you ought to have one of those, but also the smoke detectors. But I think what was particularly interesting in this proclamation is the newer construction that one would think is the safest may actually be the kind of construction that burns the fastest. So, I think that's messages that were embedded in the proclamation would be good if we could emphasize that to people. The second question I had was, and I understand from city staff that we are working to be in play with regard to any electric vehicle charging stations that may be available either through state or regional grants. And I wondered if you had anything in addition to say about that?
Kate Walker is, has been working on that, but through the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, we've had good visibility on the grants that are coming out of the Volkswagen settlement. And it's a stream of payments that will occur over the next 10 years. And there are monies that will be available statewide on a competitive basis. Bob Lazaro is working to help us put our grants together so that we can take advantage of that here in Northern Virginia and specifically in Falls Church. And the approach is to use the funds for electric charging stations, as you noted. And so, there's more to come on that, but we are in the, in play in trying to use those funds for the benefit of the city.
Great, thank you very much.
Anything else? If not, why don't we move on to the City Manager's Report? Mr. Shields?
Well, there are two things that I was planning to report on have already been touched on, the Cherry Hill Playground Equipment and the walking tour next Monday. So, just two, or maybe three, quick things. One, traffic calming on North Maple Avenue. You see equipment out there, construction equipment, to install new curb bumpouts as part of traffic calming. We've had light solutions on North Maple, and now we're moving to permanent hardscape solutions and redesign of the curbs and bumpouts on that section of street. We'll have more publicity on that as that project goes along, but that came through the NTC program. In addition, as I noted two weeks ago, we do, very shortly, we'll be putting out the new ped crossings on Lincoln Avenue and on Northwest. Those designs have just been finalized. Leaf collection is about to start, and so everybody, if you can just look on the city webpage, the way we've broken it out is the city's designed, it is divided into two zones, either north of Broad Street or south of Broad Street. So, as you're raking leaves on the weekend, you might just check the webpage. We'll have it up there as to whether they're working the north side of the street the coming week or the south side of the street, so you can plan accordingly. And then lastly, I want to congratulate Jenny Carroll and Amy Maltease, who graduated last Friday from the COG Institute of Regional Excellence. Jenny Carroll was our class president and of the IRE this year. They did a lot of work to achieve this graduation, and they did two final projects. Jenny Carroll's was on big data and how that data can be shared regionally to inform policy and decisions. And Amy Maltease did her final project on incarceration of persons with mental illness and exploration of alternatives to that lower recidivism produce better outcomes and at a lower cost. So, congratulations to them. There's a lot of work that goes into that. James Mack, City Engineer, and Matt Kay, our major deputy in the Sheriff's Department, are currently going through the next year's COG IRE cohort. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments from Mr. Shields? If not, why don't we move on to, oh, did you want to speak to the campus planning? Is there anything to update us on that, Mr. Shields?
Thank you. Just a few things to report on very briefly. We will have an Economic Working Group meeting this Friday. We're working through sort of a checklist of the major decisions and that we anticipate if the referendum is approved, that we'll need to be working on in the coming several years, and have those teed up and ready for action. But some of the things that we are advancing is just thinking about what the future land use designation and the zoning for that site will need to be. Since it was brought into the city, the campus was brought into the city, it's currently zoned R1A. So, that is something we'll need to address. And then the sort of the Alvaro's and Marcel roadmap, that's very early in the process of laying out what the zoning and entitlement process for the property would be. In addition, there's some engineering work that we're doing on the site just to understand some of the utilities and what the utility needs on that site will be. Sewerage, sanitary sewage is sort of a critical one that is front of the list in terms of engineering work that is happening right now. And then, in addition, getting our survey and our plat documents for the property. Ultimately, if it's subdivided, that, we'll need good plats for that. And then ultimately, if it is conveyed, we'll need to have all of our title searches and easements and deeds and all those types of things. We're very well documented, very clear and very clean for that process. So, those are some areas of work that are underway in addition to a whole host of other things that the Economic Working Group is focused on.
Ms. Hardy, then, Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks. Just a quick question on that. Am I correct in remembering from Alvaro's and Marcel evaluation work that the utilities and infrastructure was, I guess, discounted out of the valuation that we ultimately got from them?
That is correct. The assumption is that the developer would carry all that infrastructure cost. So, the way that that valuation study was done was taking a look at all the costs that a developer would need to incur to develop the property, and what kind of return they would need to return, make on that investment of capital, and use that as a way to assess what the value of the property would be under different development scenarios. So, the utilities are assumed to be borne by the private sector. The reason we're studying the sewage is because the developers really are going to come to us needing good baseline data on sewage. For water, electric, other utilities, it's actually a lot simpler because those utilities are there, the service is very good in that area. And so, it's just a question that their engineers can figure that out. But they will look to us for the baseline data for the sanitary sewer.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
I just want to point out, today is the 65th anniversary of the dedication of the original George Mason High School. On October 10th, 11th, and 12th, 1952, there was a Festival of Progress held in the city of Falls Church to celebrate the opening of our high school. And I have a program from 1952 here, and in it, there's a map. And the map shows what the vision of the future of George Mason would be. It's hard to see here, but there's a little spot here that says "Future Pool." There's a proclamation from the mayor, and then there's a list of all the businesses that supported the Festival of Progress. Anyway, it's a great little book. It was in the morning announcements this morning. I scanned it, so it's all out there for people to see. But I just thought that was such an interesting date. October 10th, 1952 was the beginning of the Festival of Progress. And if you'd like to see how George Mason has aged in those 65 years, there's going to be a tour, a student-led tour of George Mason High School, Wednesday, October 25th. The whole community is welcome to attend. It's been shared far and wide, and I appreciate the City Communications Department and other staff sharing it with their constituents and community organizations. There are a lot of people who want to know what George Mason is like inside, and hopefully, this will give them that opportunity. So, I have flyers, and it's also going to be available online to sign up for that tour.
All right, thank you. Why don't we now move on, unless there's any other comments or questions, to business on the agenda? Madam Clerk, will you call the first item, please?
Yes, we have TR 17-36, Resolution to Approve FY18 Funding Recommendations for the Arts and Cultural Grants and Virginia Commission for the Arts, VCA Local Challenge Grant Submission.
Ms. Messner, welcome.
Good evening, Council. On behalf of Cory Gennielli, who's our lead staff on this, I'm pleased to present the staff report. Council is asked, as you'll see on line 156 of the resolution, to approve the award of the grants that I'll describe briefly in a moment, and also authorize the city manager to execute the documents to allow us to apply for a $4,500 state local challenge grant to match these funding. So, that's the action requested before you this evening. This is, of course, the arts program that council approved back in 2013 for projects, and then added additional funding for operations. This is going to our nonprofits that do arts and cultural activities within our community. The process this year has been refined, and it has a more independent arts review committee with a lot more review internally by the Wrenckin Park staff for concurrence before it's brought before council this evening. Also, the Wrenckin Park staff are involved in a lot of grant management and quality assurance now to ensure equity and transparency of this process. At line 60, you'll see the two areas of grants. One is for projects and one is for operations. And you'll see that for the projects, there were six submissions for almost $27,000, and there's $20,000 available. And for the operating grants, there were four applications for $41,000, and there's $25,000 available. So, the need is great, and so this funding is very valuable to leverage our community resources with our nonprofits. Appendix A outlines all the projects that the committee and staff are recommending for approval for the project category. And Appendix B would have your operating expenditure requests. Appendix C is a good report because it gives you a final report of what happened with last year's funding so that you can see the benefit to our community in that regard. The two grants that would be recommended as match for the Virginia State Grant would be the Creative Cauldron, Bold New Works for Witch, and then also Falls Church Arts for the Public Sculpture Project. So, they would have a match of that $4,500. With that, all the projects are described in here, and I wasn't going to go through them this evening, but I am available to answer any questions at council house, and we recommend approval.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? So, Mr. Shields, you and I spoke earlier about what some other local communities of similar size do. Could you touch on that a little bit in terms of contributions to the art, just how Falls Church compares?
Well, when we put this program together, it was intended to be a competitive program and have a process where individual groups wouldn't come directly to the city council to ask you for money, but instead, you'd have a more transparent and competitive process by which monies could be awarded for the arts. I did find that if you looked at the city of Fairfax, Town of Herndon, and Town of Vienna, that our program is unique, that we set it up this way. A, in terms of the amount of money that is made available. This is a greater amount of money than those other jurisdictions. And, and two, the fact that, the way that it really brings the arts community into it to compete for this was a program that, when they saw that we were doing, they were interested in replicating it. I don't, I haven't followed up in the last year to see if they've done that. But that's a little bit of insight. I guess the point of our conversation was that our funding level is higher than other jurisdictions. That is noteworthy as well.
One thing also we discussed, I guess, a few weeks ago, and we also discussed the mayor's meeting, the idea of a mural on the side of a wall. And I thought that young lady from George Mason had a great idea. It really would be nice to find a way to get a mural in the city. I think would really reinforce our position as a arts and cultural leader in Northern Virginia. And so, I don't know if we could find some way to give it a little more thought or an idea of how we might proceed with that, but this conversation reminds me of those thoughts as well.
In reviewing with Cory the staff report, she noted to me that the Arts Humanities Council meeting next week will have the public arts policy on its agenda so that we could have a framework that would allow for murals as well as other arts and how we could partner with businesses. That is being benchmarked against some of our neighbors' policies. And then that would be coming forward for council approval after the Humanities Council can work through its recommendations for council.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Just a question, we were benchmarking ourselves against those smaller jurisdictions. Is it typical that they also, I know that they don't give as much money as we do, but do they also provide money for both projects and operations? Or is that just unique to us as well?
I don't recall that specifics. I think it would probably be typically for projects, for specific projects.
Yeah, I think in other localities, the operations tend to come in other forms of programs like tax exemption and so forth, other reliefs. Other localities do match the Virginia program like we do, so that's a dollar-for-dollar match. They may not have a standalone program, but you will see them matching to draw down the state grant monies.
The larger jurisdictions do have, you know, pretty, pretty big programs to help the arts as well, Fairfax County and Arlington.
Okay, are there any other comments? Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed, the public. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to adopt TR 17-36.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Yes, we have TR 17-38, Resolution to Authorize the City Manager to Accept Specific Deeds of Easement and Execute Compensation Agreements for Monetary Compensation for the South Washington Street Intermodal and Access to Transit Project.
Mr. Shields?
This resolution is coming to council because we are using federal funds to do the South Washington Street project. These are easements to allow greater sidewalk widths and to install tree planters and brick sidewalks in front of these properties. The negotiations for these easements were conducted under the federal rules, and the compensation amounts are also set forward under the federal rules. And so, the council is asked to authorize those. It'd be for three property owners. We may have some additional ones that will come. We're sort of getting, bringing them to council as they're ready to, ready to go. I'd also just note that as you go down South Washington Street, you do see the equipment there, and the utility undergrounding vaults are being put in right now. That's sort of the first messy step of the project. And we hope that that's going to be done this fall, winter, and then as we get into spring is when the visible and the good stuff will start to go in in terms of the streetscape improvements.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed, the public. Are there any comments? We have a motion. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt TR 17-38.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Z on the second?
Everybody's jumping.
Madam Clerk?
Could I have a question, blah, blah, blah?
Excuse me, you have a question?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Duncan has a question.
Were we going to have an event to commemorate the launch of this long-awaited and much-discussed project?
Mr. Shields, what do you say?
I'm sorry, I was...
Were we going to, that's okay, I'm used to not being paid attention to. Were we going to have an event to commemorate the beginning of this long-awaited and much-discussed project?
We, let's talk about that off...
Or in conjunction, and/or in conjunction with the streetscape, traffic calming. I just remember a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about an infrastructure event.
So, we're all about publicizing them, whether we have an actual choreographed event. Let's, let's talk about that if we could, offline.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion. It's been seconded. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, what's next?
Next is a closed session, I believe.
Oh.
Before we get to the closed session, I think we have some minutes and possibly some other business. Is there any other business not on the agenda anyone wants to talk about? Any stand, Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to remind those that haven't heard about this that the Environmental Sustainability Council is having a panel discussion on green schools and net-zero energy schools at their next meeting, which is, will be at, commencing 7:30 on the 19th of October. All the, all the, all the current, as well as aspirant, city council members and school board members have been invited, and it's been put out to the general public as well as interest groups, and anyone else that wishes to attend, this is your formal invitation. It's an open meeting, and it should be pretty exciting. It's an open meeting, and it should be pretty exciting. Thank you very much.
And we did send it to all the other boards and commissions, city boards and commissions as well.
All right, thank you. Any other council member comments, standing or regional committee or liaison reports? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. First of all, on Thursday night, the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority is scheduled to approve the 2040 Long-Term Plan, and the city has several projects of importance in it, including the, the additional entrance to the East Falls Church Station and the, the light rail, the, the, not light rail, but bus rapid transit project from Alexander to Tyson's Corner, including serving key parts of the city. That's up for a vote on Thursday. Secondly, at last week's Northern Virginia Transportation Commission meeting, we heard from Ray LaHood, who was asked to study Metro by the governor. He reported on his recommendation that the Metro Board should be reduced to five members, the only Virginia member being appointed by the governor. All the localities had some significant words at that point to share about the fact that unlike Maryland, local governments in Virginia, including this one, carry direct responsibility to fund Metro, and that a gubernatorial appointment would effectively leave us out of the governance for the metro system. The second point that was made was that with all the focus on governance, there was very little discussion on the part of Mr. LaHood about what funding mechanism he was going to propose and how we were going to have the state carry more of its fair share, considering the fact that the state gets back more than double what it's currently providing to Metro for support in terms of state-designated taxes. It's like between two and three times. So there's a lot going on, and I hope in a future meeting I'll be able to spend more time, but I wanted to just brief people quickly on that and ask if anybody had any questions.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your good work on that. Any other reports, comments, questions? Okay, why don't we move on then to approval of, do we have any minutes to be approved?
Yes, we have March 27th and September 25th.
Do you want to take them one at a time? Does anyone have comments to either of them? Anyone?
You can do them together if you'd like.
Do you want to make a motion, or did you?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes for March 27th, 2017, and September 25th, 2017.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Okay, and so let's move on. Our last item is a closed session, and so we are doing a closed session this evening. And I'm going to go ahead and read the going-in motion. Upon a motion made by council member...
Connolly.
And seconded by council member...
Duncan.
And passed by a voice vote of city council, council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A19 for briefing by law enforcement officials about protecting public safety as relates to terrorist threats or other vulnerabilities and discussions of matters excluded from disclosure by subdivision 14 of Section 2.2-3705.2, including the location or operation of security equipment or systems where disclosure would jeopardize the safety or security of any government facility, building, or structures, structure, or person using such facility, buildings, or structure. Council member Connolly.
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Z?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarter?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the cameras are rolling, we are back in session after our closed session. Let's go ahead and see if we have a motion. Upon a motion made by council member...
Oliver.
And seconded by council member...
Hardy.
And passed upon affirmative roll-call vote in open session. Council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Z?
Yeah.
Tarter?
Yes.
Okay, and it is 9:44. This is a certification. Upon a motion made by council member...
Oliver.
Oliver. And seconded by council member...
Hardy.
Hardy. And passed upon affirmative roll-call vote in open session, it was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the city council. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Z?
Yes.
Tarter?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else to discuss tonight?